Thank you. I applaud the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The recognition that this month is the month we celebrate Memorial Day. On behalf of my fellow veterans, I'd like to make a prayer for our school. Here God is prayer that I say tonight is for our troops that must fight. These are the troops that we all love. And so I pray Almighty God above, please keep them safe on their way and bring them home to us one day.
Roll call chief?
Councilwoman Kobe?
Here.
Councilman Verris?
Here.
Councilwoman Demko?
Here.
Councilman Delos?
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Here.
President Katina?
Here.
Mayor Kabistic?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have some special proclamations tonight for some people in the audience in attendance that we'll begin with.
This first proclamation is his memorial of the month Memorial Day. This first proclamation is very near and dear to probably everyone's heart up here. This gentleman is, he was inducted into the Hall of Honor, which is the Soldiers and Sailors' Memorial Hall, which is a tremendous honor. So here is the proclamation for that from our borough. Whereas Roger Reed Paradise was born in Ipswich, Massachusetts on December 31st, 1942, and raised in Selma, Massachusetts. And whereas Roger Reed Paradise enlisted in the United States Air Force in 1959 at the age of 17. And whereas Roger Reed Paradise became an aircraft load master and flew on numerous types of cargo aircraft accumulating over 8,000 hours of flying time, including 800 hours flying combat missions in Vietnam between 1966 and 1968. And whereas Roger Reed Paradise received numerous other awards, including six air medals, the Purple Heart, the Air Force Combination Medal in the Marine Corps Presidential Unit Citation. And he was also awarded two distinguished flying crosses for outstanding heroism and selfless devotion to duty during combat operations in the Republic of Vietnam on December 3rd, 1966, and May 8th, 1968. Whereas Roger Reed Paradise received a tremendous honor when he was inducted into the Soldier and Sailors' Hall of Valor on March 27, 2011. And whereas Roger Reed Paradise has been a proud resident and outstanding citizen of Carnegie Borough since 1984. Now therefore, I, Jack Kabistic, Mayor of Carnegie, along with the entire Borough Council, take great pride in honoring Roger Reed Paradise for his heroism, devotion to duty, and service to our country and community. It's like you'd have the Public Safety Committee come up here. First of all, I want to say that even reading that proclamation brings chills up and down my spine, just to think the sacrifice that he made for our country. That's quite a tremendous sacrifice, sir. Thank you so much. And speaking of sacrifice in a different light, next week is National EMS Week. And if we've ever had to use the EMS for anything, that's a good thing. But when we need them, they're here. They do a 24/7 operation. And the Carnegie EMS is one of the finest around. So we'd like to honor them for their service to our community with this being National EMS Week coming up. The Borough of Carnegie to designate the week of May 15, 2011 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Carnegie Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the Emergency Medical Service System consists of: emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Jack Kabistic, along with our whole Public Safety Committee and the entire Borough Council, take great pride in recognizing and honoring Carnegie Emergency Medical Services and hereby do proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2011, as Emergency Medical Services Week. So if you guys would like to come up here, honor you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Dawson. We very appreciate your appreciation for us. It means a lot to us.
I'm Kevin Early. Thank you guys very much for the appreciation.
Hi, I'm Maurice Brown. I'm current manager for Carnegie. Just hope I never have to see you. Some of you, yeah, I have to see you.
Hi, I'm Rick Bruce-Nack. A happy annual service is required.
Jeff Chiller, just want to say thank you.
Also, I'd like to have Chief Kendrick step up here too. He's also part of the EMS and he's chief of our fire department. So come on up here. When you see these guys during the week, stop and thank them. Maybe buy them a cup of coffee. Also, if we have some press here, this would be a great story for one of your columns. Maybe do a ride-along.
And I would like to say on a personal note, I appreciate all of our firemen and all of our EMPs. However, Mo and Jeff saved my life in October, and I want to thank them especially.
Can we get a group picture? With the short guy in the front?
I don't want to hear what you say there. With the short man on top. Unfortunately, you did have to see me, but I'd love to see you again.
On another interesting note, the EMS came up to the school last, beginning of the month, I think it was, for our career day. And they provided valuable information to the students at our school about how to be competent, how to get into EMS services. So thank you for that too. Chief, would you like to step up here? Our next award is something that's definitely near and dear to Chief's heart and near and dear to my heart also. We have this DARE program that's probably one of the best in the county, if not in the country. And we do a great job of education for the students with Sergeant Litten and Chief. And we have three students who wrote an essay that are DARE winners. And what we're going to do is we're going to acknowledge them, and then they can come up and actually read their DARE pledge, which won't take too long. And then I'll read their proclamation first. Whereas the Carnegie Police Department and the Carrington School District cooperated presenting the DARE, which is Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program, to the students attending the Carnegie Elementary School. And whereas students in the sixth grade are enrolled in a comprehensive core curriculum teaching them skills to resist tobacco, alcohol, drugs, and violence. And whereas students in the sixth grade are required to complete various assignments during the course of the DARE program, including writing an essay about what they learned in the DARE program. Whereas student essays are evaluated by professional educators and police for their content and sincerity. And whereas students who distinguish themselves by their essays are recognized and asked to read their essays to the audience at the annual DARE graduation that was held on April 28th, 2011. And now therefore, I, Jack Kabistic, Mayor of Carnegie, along with the entire Borough Council and our police department, take great pride in recognizing and honoring the sixth grade DARE essay winners for 2011. It's Hannah Vayores, Elijah Kajinic, and Nate Wilcox. Please come up here. If each would read their short pledge.
I am going to remember DARE for the rest of my life, and I will make my decisions from what I've learned in this class. I will know the right choices about drugs and drinking. I promise to say no.
So you know, this is just a pledge at the end of their essay. I can't have a reread essay. It will be here all day, somewhere two and three and four pages long. They did a great job of this.
My DARE pledge, I promise that for all of my life, I will never do drugs, smoke, or drink. It ruins your life and extremely hard to get off of. In more ways than these things, it could ruin your life. I will be strong.
I, and I will pledge that I will resist drugs and vials. I will do my best to be a positive influence on my friends and classmates and to help them to resist drugs and violence.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any public comment on any of the listed motions tonight? If there is, if you'd please step forward and state your name. Seeing that there's no public comment, we'll move right along. Administration and Finance, Councilman Verris?
Mr. President, I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of April 14th, or April 11th, 2011.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilwoman Kobe?
Yes.
And Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delos?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the May bill list and addenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delos?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to award the garbage and rubbish contract to Allied Waste Services of Pittsburgh for a three-year period beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending June 30th, 2014.
Second. Comment? We put this out for bid, and they were the lowest responsible bidder. And I know that some residents have had questions or issues with their service in the past. But they assured us that if there were any problems going forward, to contact them, and they will react immediately to the complaints.
Mr. President, I would just like to make a comment. As we do have to accept this bid, I personally am not in favor of accepting this bid, even though we have to. But we really don't have a choice according to our legal department. Is that right, Mr. Solicitor? Because just in my dealings with Allied Waste, there have been a few issues that I thought that they'd dropped the ball on, and I've been extremely unhappy with. And I will be watching this carefully, but I'm not sure if they can step up their service and meet the needs. Because a few times, we were promised that that was going to happen, and it didn't happen. Or, not we, I was promised that that was going to happen, and it did not happen. So unfortunately, we are bound by the lowest bidder, but I do have some concerns. So as usual, if you do have concerns with the services, feel free to contact any one of us, including myself. And I will do whatever I can to fight for you guys, and I know these guys will too, and ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, give us a second.
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded. Chief, would you do a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delos?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe?
Yes.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to advertise ordinance number 2353, ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie relative to the establishment and maintenance of police employees' pension, annuity, insurance, and benefit funds or funds to amend certain provisions of the pension plan or program applicable to the police of said borough to comply with Act 600 of 1956 requirements regarding intervening military service.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to enter into an agreement with Wagner Plaza Associates for the borough to rent 94 parking spaces in a parking lot adjacent to Owens Wagner Plaza, effective May 9th, 2011, and ending November 30th, 2032.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to direct the borough solicitor to develop specifications for the advertisement bids for the gasoline diesel contract for borough vehicles.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Code enforcement, seeing that there are no motions for code enforcement tonight, we'll go onto Public Works. Councilwoman Demko?
Motion to approve A application number one from Robinson Pipe Clean in the amount of $125,584.64 for repair work completed between February 28th, 2011, through March 31st, 2011 for the 2010 sanitary sewer lining project as required by the consent order.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilman Delos?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe?
Yes.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to hire Walter Chapman as a full-time truck driver with the Department of Public Works at a current salary of $22.21 per hour.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
I would just like to comment. This young man has been an asset to our borough from his point of view. He was originally a full-time temporary employee, but he's done great soil work for us. He's just really fit the bill, and he's a local resident, lifelong resident, and it's just great to be able to bring him on as a regular salary, full-time employee.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote on this, please, Chief.
Councilwoman Kobe?
Yes.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delos?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer part-time summer health employment to Matt Cold and Scott Barber from the Department of Public Works at a salary of $9 per hour with no other benefits pending a physical examination and a drug and alcohol screen.
Second. Motion to make and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delos?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kobe?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to permit the Sullivan Contracting/JG Drywall Company softball team to use 7th Avenue Field every Monday beginning May 1st of August 29th, 2011.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. Motion A is motion to approve Resolution Number 2011-07, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie creating a handicap parking space near 303 5th Avenue.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
My next motion, Mr. President, is a motion to approve Resolution Number 2011-09, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie recognizing and honoring armed forces and their families on this Memorial Day. And I will read said resolution. This is Memorial Day, and with the recent events of a week ago yesterday, I felt it was very fitting to present such a resolution to my colleagues and to our borough. A resolution of the Borough of Carnegie recognizing and honoring our armed forces and their families on this Memorial Day weekend. Whereas on September 11th, 2011, our country suffered a tremendous loss of life when attacked by terrorists without provocation. And whereas since September 11th, 2001, our country has began fighting a war on terrorism on several fronts, including Iraq and Afghanistan. And whereas thousands of brave service members have died and been wounded in this war on terrorism. And whereas on May 1st, 2011, the perpetrator of the horrific attacks of September 11th, 2001, was finally brought to justice by our armed forces. Now therefore, be resolved that Carnegie Borough Council recognizes and acknowledges the sacrifice that men and women of our armed forces continue to make in defending our freedom and democracy, and take great pride in honoring them on this Memorial Day, resolved by the Borough of Carnegie Council of the Borough of Carnegie, Allegheny County, Carmouth, Pennsylvania, and Attar Tsweden, held on the 9th day of May, 2011. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I have no other motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sarsfield. Community Development, Councilman Delos?
A motion to adopt ordinance 2352, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie establishing a shade tree commission.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, the purpose, the main purpose for the Shade Tree Commission is to make rules and monitor the trees in our business district, which have been a big problem over the past few years, especially in the central lot near the library, near the old post office. But it also extends into other areas of town, and will certainly be a benefit.
Thank you, Councilman. Did we have a second on that?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
A motion to refer request for the creation of an airport hazard zoning overlay district to the Borough Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President, the purpose of this motion is that the FAA, because we do have air traffic that flies over Carnegie, the FAA has established rules regarding building and structures, and is requiring that all municipalities which are in air traffic patterns to establish such zoning rules.
Thank you, Councilman. There was a second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to advertise the sale of borough property located at 415-417 Elk Avenue to the highest bidder with minimum selling price of $35,000.
Second, and comment?
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion, discussion, Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes. We, some time ago, when we had a parking authority in existence, they purchased this property along Elk Avenue. The lot has never really been fully developed to get its full potential. There has been some interested parties in this property, and that's why we are putting it out for advertisement to see if interested parties do come forward. If not, we will continue to review the development or the use of that set property.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve Resolution 2011-08, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie opposing the governor's cut to education and urging him to reconsider and work with the legislature in taking more balanced approach with these cuts and the budget overall. Resolution reads as follows. A resolution of the Borough of Carnegie opposing the governor's proposed cuts to education. Whereas Carnegie Borough Council recognizes the difficult fiscal environment currently facing Pennsylvania and the many municipalities that comprise this great Commonwealth. And whereas on March 8th, Governor Corbett announced his 2010-2011 budget with a proposed budget cut of $1 billion from public education and approximately another $660 million from state-run universities with education being yet with diverse cuts. And whereas in proposing these education cuts, Governor Corbett called on public school employees to forego any pay increases this year and apparently will make to furlough any pay increases this year and apparently will make it easier for local school districts to furlough employees when funding falls short. And whereas such cuts, if adopted, will dramatically undermine both basic education and all higher education and will most definitely impact the quality of education provided with the potential elimination of programs as well as staff layoffs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Carnegie Borough Council opposes the governor's proposed cuts to education and urges him to reconsider and work with the legislature in taking more balanced approach with these cuts and the budget overall. Resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Carnegie, Allegheny County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, at its meeting held on the ninth day of May, two thousand and eleven. Second.
The motion has been made seconded. Is there any discussion on this item?
No, I just, uh, want to commend this council for stepping up. Um, although this resolution, uh, does not make a significant impact, I think that it's important that our residents and the members of our school district and the, the governor gets a message from this elected body, um, that every child in, in this country, this great nation of ours deserves to be provided an education. Um, certainly, you know, nobody likes higher taxes, but we need to provide education for our children. And it's important that our institutions receive proper funding to do so. So, I just want to applaud each and every one of my colleagues for supporting such a resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Sarisfeld. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, how committee reports, Administration and Finance, Councilman Ferris.
Uh, going back to what, uh, Councilman Sarisfeld just talked about. Uh, we, myself and President Katina went to the last school board meeting, and that was last Thursday. And, uh, the feasibility study for the new elementary school to be put here in Carnegie is still on hold. But, um, one interesting thing came up. Um, their fund balance, when they started the program, was around ten to twelve million dollars. A fund balance means that's what you have left over that you can spend. And, uh, right now, they're up over thirteen million dollars. So, good news, they decided to lower the billage to one mil. One mil in our school district is worth five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, what it, it really means is we're putting two million dollars aside every year in our fund balance. They're going to knock that down to half a million, so we'll still be putting away one and a half million. Uh, they're going to be looking at newer, new programs for curriculum up there that they might want to add. Because every time you add something, you do have to put more teachers on and increase your staff. Uh, but they'll be looking at that from now till the end of the year. And, uh, I guess that after, like, uh, they've been holding the line on taxes for about seven or eight years now. Uh, they did accumulate the big fund balance, so one mil is good. They may do more in the future, who knows, if they don't build a new school here. So, that's good news for everybody. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Ferris. And one mil, if you're, just to clarify, if you own a hundred thousand dollar home, you'll see about a hundred dollars in property tax relief. Uh, that's what one mil basically translates into every hundred thousand. Um, for Code Enforcement and Children's Events Committee, Councilwoman Kobe.
Uh, we have nothing for Code Enforcement this evening as far as the Children's Events Committee. Obviously, there'll be nothing coming up until we have a fundraiser at the festival. But I did want to thank everyone that helped and that came out for the Easter egg hunt. Um, although it was our second one, the first one we had, as I told you, we'd never had any money, it was nine years ago. So, we made some mistakes and we'll fix them. And what was good, we'll keep, what was bad, we'll pitch out, and what was mediocre, we'll tweak to make it better. And here again, we had it at the Fire Hall because you never know, Easter's one of those holidays, late year, early in the year. So, I want to thank all my firemen and especially Chief Cantrax. And it, it was just perfect. They set up for, I don't love to finger, I'm like a queen that day. They set up for me and they clean up for me and they're the best. But I think all the kids had a good time. There were a couple really good pictures of the signal. I remember one of the big Councilwoman Dunco's grandson that I had nothing to do with, I didn't take the picture.
And I didn't either.
And if anybody's interested, I have tons more pictures, a couple videos. I'd like to get them up on my, um, my website. However, I tried to get one up and I crashed it, so I didn't have a computer for four days. But sooner or later, you'll see some pictures and some video. But, you know, next time I guess we'll see an event, other than, an event, an event, other than the festival where we ask for your money, is the Halloween Promenade, so, but I think a good time was had by all, so, thank you very much.
Public Works, Councilwoman Dunco.
I just quit, I just wanted to let you know that the Public Works is out there, they started cutting the grass, so they're working on that. They're getting the fields ready for the kids for summer and for softball. And they're also working on the park so that they want to print your house, it's going to be.
Thanks for all the list.
Public Safety, Councilman Sarisfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, it's great that the warm weather here, uh, spring has, uh, finally sprung. The only thing is, we get, uh, more rainy days and sunny days, so the grass gets ahead of me. But, uh, I know that, uh, you know, now's a nice time of the year where we like to go and sit on our porches. But, uh, please remember in, in doing so, you know, that, uh, if you're sitting out on the front porch, that, uh, you know, your back door's locked and secured and, you know, vice versa. If you're out on the back porch, keep that front door locked and secured. And, uh, I know many people, you know, without air conditioning units, you know, like to open up their windows. But, uh, remember before you leave for work or any extended period of time that you keep the, uh, windows at street level, secured, um, so it's not easy to get in. If you happen to go away for a longer extended weekend, um, please, you know, have a neighbor pick up your mail or have the post office hold it, um, so that it does look like, you know, somebody's there. A lot of people get the automatic light turn-ons, um, but, uh, you know, you just want to keep your home safe, um, from any predators. And again, I want to applaud our military for their efforts, uh, a week ago, this past Sunday. And, uh, you know, now it would be great at this year's Memorial Day to see the streets full, um, of people and the flags waving and honoring, you know, each and every one of our veterans. I know Memorial Day is for those that lay at rest, but, you know, it would be great to see you come out and support the, the living veterans also. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sarisfeld. Community Development, Councilman Delosse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, last weekend, of course, we had, not this immediate past weekend, but ten days ago weekend, we had a very successful event here in Carnegie with the Civil War Weekend. The, uh, library, uh, facility had, uh, I think, over a thousand people that came through the building in one day, which was more than we've had in the past. Uh, of course, at the park, we had, uh, a massive contingent of reenacting soldiers in Civil War Guard. And, uh, I think if you were anywhere in Carnegie, you heard the cannon fire on Saturday. Very successful event in Carnegie and I hope that, uh, we'll be able to do it again. Maggie is here. Maggie's executive director of the Library Museum. Yes, sure.
I, I did. Um, it was an incredible day and I feel we were paying tribute to our American Heritage War Target a hundred and fifty years ago in April. Um, and as we're talking about Memorial Day, you know, the room that we had is the Grand Army of the Republic Post. It was the Grand Army of the Republic that established Memorial Day as a national holiday. And I hope that some of us actually go all the way to the cemetery where we have rather extraordinary military plot of this, uh, Civil War monument that's erected by our post many years ago. Um, but what I have to say thank you to is the chief and the chief. Um, it was a real partnership. The chief, that's like the Bruce, like Scott, you know, but I, um, working, working with, um, on this event, I, I said we had three constituencies. We had the public and as Rick said, over a thousand people came, many of them from right around here, but many of them from really out of state, out of county came by. Um, the reenactment community themselves, the compliments were extraordinary. They were extraordinary to the library musical, but took apart, took the facility. Uh, the EMS people were there, nothing went wrong, but everything was taken care of. And the third constituency was Carnegie Borough, not just the Council of Public Works, but the community. We were so proud of what we did. We know it was noisy, uh, but it, it was a very, very stirring day. And finally, I have to thank Councilwoman Delosse, Americanistic, for dancing with me at the bar.
We have, um, another event in town, a much smaller event, that I just wanted to mention that if, uh, all of this talk of soldiers and, uh, and reenacting and, uh, and, uh, serving for our nation, uh, there's a lot of things going on in the world right now that, uh, where people are experiencing this for the very first time. And these are countries typically in North Africa and the Middle East are getting their first taste of, of this, uh, sense of what it's like to have a government that actually represents you. Uh, they don't get to have council meetings like we do. And this is a very exciting time for them, but also a very dangerous time for them. Um, this coming Sunday, we're going to have a speaker at the synagogue in Carnegie, which is on Chestnut Street. His name is Dr. Youssef Rajid. He's an Egyptian, uh, by birth, but he's a Pittsburgh, uh, resident for about twenty-five years. He's a physician. And he's going to speak about his experiences, uh, when he was younger, as a teenager, under the NASA government and being arrested for protesting and thrown in jail for quite so many months. And, uh, he's going to talk about that and what it means for Egyptian people to know democracy today. And I think it'd be fascinating thing, if, uh, everybody here is welcome to attend and there's some flyers out on the table, uh, out in the hallway. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Delosse. Borough management report, Chief.
No report tonight, President.
Thank you. Chief Cantrax, Carnegie Military Fire Department report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for months of April, we had twenty-eight fire calls and a hundred and seventy-seven EMS calls. At this time, I'd like to take time to thank Chief Harmon for our very successful five K run. And I'd like to thank the mayor for recognizing my men and women that did their job. And one more person I'd like to thank is Councilwoman Kobe, or Councilwoman Kobe.
That's okay.
Carol had, in this last past month, raised some money for the fire department and bought us what we call a hot stick. And what that does is it allows us to check live wires, any kind of electrical problems. And she did this on her own and we want to thank you because it's a very good piece of equipment we needed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I hope it keeps all my guys safe and, um, I'm working on funds for a second one. One of my hobbies is I make jewelry. If anybody wants a necklace or bracelet or pair of rings, call me.
Any others that is on the consolidation, we're still moving forward with that. And, uh, we need to get together on the inspections for the equipment. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief Cantrax. Are you a new council member? Any report?
I do have one report. Um, it's about a spaghetti dinner. It's going to be at our school on April thirteenth. It's three twenty for the help aid by EB charity.
We need to.
Uh, yes. Yes. Uh, for those of you who don't know, there's a young boy who's born in Crafton, named KJ Highfield. Um, he was born with EB, was a veteran of the Civil War. He affects approximately one hundred fifty thousand babies born in the USA. Um, it's condition where his skin is underdeveloped, so it's basically like what happened in the Civil War. It's very painful to see. Um, and this is just an emergency money for the family, um, to help for research as well as for things to help their child. Um, it's eight dollars for adults, six dollars for students, and four dollars for a children under five. Um, or for children that are five, three-year-old, two-year-old, three-year-old. And it is forty-five eighty, it's for that kid. So, let's see, something I said?
Thank you. Mayor for report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a sergeant crime report. Criminal activity. We had criminal arrests and citations of twenty-eight last month. Traffic citations of fifty-seven, hundred and fourteen parking tickets, eight hundred and forty-four complaints and self-initiative, self-initiated activity prior to this department. I'd like to touch on, last month, we, uh, I gave you information about Dax and told him he had a tumor and he was off work, but he's back on to work. Uh, as, as I said last month, the tumor was benign. He's back to full duty and, uh, we're glad to have him back. Couple issues of, uh, that have been prevalent in our crime reports as of recently. One is we've had a, a few, a few incidences, incidents of, uh, ransacked vehicles. So, what is happening is people are going around looking for vehicles with, that are unlocked and they're ransacking them, looking for valuables. We all, we, we all know that if, if we can, to lock our vehicles if possible and also not to keep valuables in plain sight. Probably best one to keep the valuables in the car at all. Also, there seems to be a number of scams going on out there. I wanted to alert everybody of one scam that, uh, that I've had two complaints on already and I actually received a letter myself for the same scam. Uh, this scam is a, on a, it looks like what official letterhead, it says US Airlines. And it's actually signed by someone who's with the title Vice President. And telling me that I won two round trip airplane tickets somewhere and all I need to do is, the value's worth fourteen hundred dollars, certain restrictions apply. And I, all I need to do is make a phone call to claim my tickets. Now, I didn't even call my ticket, I didn't even call because I noticed this is a scam. First of all, there's no such airlines as US Airlines, which looks very coincidental, like US Airways. But they went through a lot of trouble. There's a fake logo there. There's actually my name. And it's actually signed by, I don't, it looks like a real person signed it and Vice President and it has even a tracking ID number. So, before you engage in anything, and especially if they ask you for money, be very careful. And I, I think a lot of people in Carnegie have gotten this. I don't know if anybody here has. But I think a lot of people in Carnegie have gotten this because they've had two complaints already. People wondering if, if there was a scam or if it's legitimate. So, be very careful. Uh, there's been a, also, an alert out there that the scams have been increased due to our economy and due to our time, so, so I wanted to alert to that. Also, another, uh, crime alert. While you're out walking in this, in this beautiful weather, if you see vehicles on your street with expired stickers or vehicles that have been sitting there for a long period of time uh, with improper registration, call our police department. We will check it out. Uh, sometimes, uh, cars get dumped there or sometimes people leave their vehicles on there. And we will, what we'll do is we'll red tag those vehicles as abandoned and, uh, they'll have seven to eleven days to move that vehicle or we'll tow it. So, when you're out there, if you see a vehicle that's, that's been there for a while and it, and the stickers are expired, give us a call. Don't hesitate. Nine-one-one is the, just call nine-one-one. Wanted to update everybody on the pedestrian crossing. Uh, if, uh, for those who were here at the last meeting, uh, I've been trying to get Pendon to, uh, address the crossing issue between Boden and Hopala Road. Now, that is technically not in Carnegie, but they're building a new supermarket out there called the Bottom Dollar. It's right next to the subway. And if you've been following the construction, it's going up pretty fast. And it will be up, uh, if everything holds to steady, it will be up sometime in November. Uh, my concern is most of the pedestrian traffic is coming from our area. So, I actually had a meeting, uh, a couple weeks ago with Pendon on this and they, they brought a number of individuals. And they, they promised me, and they invited out Denise Fitzgerald and the, uh, Commissioner, First Ward Commissioner Eileen McGuire, I think is her name. Uh, is it, uh, to?
Mayor, it's Eileen.
Eileen McGuire. Thank you very much. Uh, Eileen McGuire to this meeting. And, uh, they were very interested in, in getting an additional crosswalk there too. So, Pendon promised us that they will do a full study once that, uh, supermarket is developed. And if the pedestrian traffic meets the need, they will consider putting a crosswalk in that area. Uh, that full study should begin probably within a month or two after the supermarket is up. So, that's good news. That's, Pendon's paying for that. It doesn't come out of any of our budget. Also, I'd like to talk a little bit about, I'll give you an update on the Salvation Army. Their, uh, their lease at the Black Swan Gallery is where, that's where they're going to be moving. And their lease begins on May twentieth. However, this is going to take them a little while to be up and running at the Black Swan Gallery. So, they're looking for the first week of June. Gallery, so they're looking for the first week of June for that to be open, and that to be their outreach headquarters for Carnegie. And if, if you look out the window, you can see the Black Swan Gallery from here. That's where, uh, so that's where the Salvation Army will be housed, and if you, if you're familiar with this, they're gonna be selling the building on Washington Avenue. That's still, that building still has not gone to market yet, uh, so they don't have any buyer yet. Uh, and they also guaranteed that there would be no lapse in service from the time that the lease is signed to the time that they, they're up and running at the Black Swan, they will continue services out of their building on the Washington Avenue. So, that's good news. Now, I have some interesting information. Uh, as we all know, we participated in the census last year, well, we have some census numbers back for, uh, Carnegie, and I'm gonna go over briefly some of the census numbers to get everybody updated. I actually made some copies, so if anybody wants some copies before they leave, at the end of the day, you can grab a copy of our updated census numbers. Now, the full census hasn't been, hasn't been released, the full census data has not been released yet. The only census data that has been released is the data that's gonna be used for redistricting. Uh, and what we did, what we're redistricting is, is that when, when they take a census and population shifts, changes, uh, they have to redraw the, the lines for your congressional districts, for your senate, for your senate districts, and our, our state officers do that, they have, they actually have a committee that does that for state, but they're appointed by our state officers. And so, they take the census data and they will redraw most likely the congressional lines, because in Pennsylvania, we're losing two congressional seats, so, our congressional districts will expand. So, uh, what our total though, is for, uh, the census is, our total number was seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, that's our population number under the new census. That's down over four hundred from the year two thousand. We were closer by eighty, eighty-four hundred in the year two thousand. And they also gave us that housing unit count. Uh, in Carnegie, the housing unit count is four thousand three hundred and twenty-nine housing units, and out of those housing units, there's thirty-nine hundred that are considered occupied, and four hundred twenty-nine are considered vacant. Now, there'll be a, a bunch of other data that will be released, uh, between June first and August thirtieth, thirtieth, they don't know exactly what date, but I have a, uh, all the data that they will be using for redistricting right here, and I'm wanting to go over all that, but that's the basic. But what I will tell you is a little bit about our participation rate. Our petition, our participation rate was pretty much in line with the, with this, uh, the county and the state. Our participation rate, our participation rate was seventy-seven percent in the census. Where Ellie County's participation rate was seventy-nine percent, Pennsylvania was at seventy-seven percent also, and then the whole nation, the participation rate was seventy-four percent. Now, that, what the participation rate is, that's when the, the actual forms that they receive back, once, once they give you a form, if they receive it back, that's counted towards the participation rate. So, what they'll do after that is they'll go to anybody who didn't participate, they send out a census worker to their house, and they will visit that house up to six times to get the information. And if they don't get the information within six times, then they will make a decision whether to declare that, that household vacant or not. So, the other thing is if everybody remembers back to the year two thousand, when we had that long census storm, well, they don't do that anymore. As you know, this year was a much shorter census storm, but what they do, instead of that, is they have an American Community Service survey that they do every year, and they, and what they do is they, i- is they create data, they, they extrapolate data from that, from the survey, and they create, uh, inferences based on that. So, the collected data results from the eight, from the American, uh, Community Service survey, it arrives every December, and it's good for five years. And what I have is the last five years that was released on the last, uh, the last information. Now, this data isn't as accurate as the census, but it's what they use nowadays instead of the census, because they reduced the form, they don't have all those questions on there anymore, so what they do is they use the American Community Survey for the estimates instead of asking all those questions. So, I will put that out there too. But, that's a little interesting, because, once again, it's not a major drop, but our population here in Carnegie has dropped again. And, you know, four hundred here, four hundred there, you know, the, we need to figure out ways to bring people back into this borough. We need to figure out ways to clean up our vacant property, but if not, uh, we're gonna keep losing population, we're gonna keep losing population, and then, so, hopefully, with this block here, we'll continue to work on that. Lastly, I'd like to, a couple thank yous. Uh, as Chief Kendricks said, I'd thank Chief Harmon for the race, for what he did on the race. I think he has a few more gray hairs over this. I also wanna thank, I, I had a privilege to work on the finish line at the race, and, uh, I worked with a, a number of Carleton wrestlers, and I'm gonna thank Keith Hatcher and Dave Dodola for providing me the car, the wrestlers to work the finish line, so thank you guys. I also wanna thank Public Works for donating their time for the race, they don't get paid, you see them down there, they're all, and I can tell you one thing, Public Works is always donating their time for something. And that, and that's, that's not typical in a union environment, so I, I really appreciate that they do. I wanna thank Steve for a great job of cleaning up the other day, Steve. Uh, and I wanna thank the Carnegie Elementary Kids and, and some of their parents that worked with me, and, uh, we, we, for those who live up on Washington Avenue, not only did we hit all the way down the railroad tracks, we made it all the way up to the end of Washington Avenue cleaning up, so, we, unfortunately, and this, this, this really drives me nuts, we did that, and I know there was basically no big pieces of garbage, and then that, after we did that, and I went back to my house, got all cleaned up, I left, I saw a big bottle thrown right there, and I was like, you believe this? You just cleaned this up, buddy. That's the way it works. Anyway, I just wanna thank everybody for, uh, their effort on that day. So, thank you very much, Mr. President, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any general public comment? Leo?
According to the paper, you people got a grant for Third Street, am I right? You're gonna beautify it, is that right?
That's correct.
Anything to do with Covet Street?
Actually, we are looking at something for Covet Street.
All these years, you know, you're a lot of much normal, we have to wait. You know, listen to how this is taking care of years ago. You know, it's not liable, you should live up there, having trucks thrown over the sidewalk. One of these days, what's gonna happen, somebody's gonna get killed, then they'll come up and fix it. They'll find the money. They can't tell me for one minute they don't have the money. Rendell said I could get out of office, bought the tunnel out of the river, that should've been, I could've told him that. Am I right? They have money for the ball fields? They have money for everything else. All these countries are on our payroll, and here we are starving in Carnegie. And by the time, excuse me, and by the time you fill your gas tank, and pay your titties, they got you by the throat. And here's another thing I was telling the secretary tonight, you send your kid to Catholic school, you gotta pay, am I right? And you gotta pay the school tax besides. You think this is right? Let's talk about justice. That's all I gotta say, but I hope you keep it in your mind. And I thank you very much for your time, and I hope you all have a good evening.
What, what we're looking at up there, Leo, is Cowich Hill is, Cowich Street is currently a state road. We're looking at doing a turn back, is to where Covet Street would then become a borough street once again. Once it would become a borough street, we would have, be able to, uh, put in tighter controls on that. So, we've currently applied for that, and that's what we're looking at doing. So, we, 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 as a municipality, are looking to address that issue.
You know, you talk about promises. Right here in this room, we had the late mayor of Pittsburgh, O'Conne, was standing here, the governor was here, and a lot of his henchmen were here, and everything seemed to be long ago. And they toured the earth. Here we are, from fourteen ninety-two to old enough, we're still here.
Well, and, and again, can you remember from three years ago, Leo, when, when I was seeking?
Excuse me, I'm not blaming you, this could've been nine years ago.
Right, when I was seeking, Goff, is one of the things that, that I had mentioned to you is, the only way that I saw to control that was to put a weight restriction on that road to prohibit the, the trucks that traveled there. It being a state road would not allow us to do that. Now, if that road gets turned back to us, I believe that that, that may open the door, we, certainly would have to further out discussion with our solicitor, but I think it would grant us greater opportunity if that road was in our hands rather than the state. So, we are addressing it.
I don't know who the engineer was whenever they put seventy-nine up there, do you remember they had the bridge here and run over here? And why in the world they would enclose an industrial park beyond me? I don't understand it. You have to have the money for the tunnel, and I don't know who that tunnel's for, I'm never gonna use it. I don't have the money to, over there. That might have been over there, a little glass, it'd be like that, some fifty. And then all this state here in Carnegie, in the sad, great big United States, the greatest country in the face of the earth. And I thank you again.
Thank you, Leo. Any other public comment? Paul, you wanna say anything?
Yeah, there's other, yes, um, the mayor thought about seeing whether it's a scam. If you get a letter that you feel is a scam, you're not sure, you wanna bring it up to the office and Kenny Punch will take a look at it. If you're pretty confident it's a scam, send it to the State Attorney General. The only way you can get stopped is to get it in their hands, let them review it, trace it, and take an action. So, don't be afraid to do that, they love your thing.
One other thing I'd like to add there, I gotta wanna know also that it had no stamp on it, and it was in my mailbox.
I can tell you, I gave it to the office, he emailed the office.
But this had no stamp on it, but it was in my mailbox.
Yeah, oh, it walked around a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, that's just the one.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Seeing that there's no other public comment, we'll begin with Council on Welfare. Councilwoman Debka?
Yes, I'd just like to tell everybody that the Relay for Life is gonna be, um, in June up at Carleton, again, it's gonna be June eighteenth and nineteenth, and I'm collecting dimes again for law for Relay for Life, so if anybody has any loose dimes on them tonight, I'd be one happy to take them off your hands.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Gloss?
A reminder that the Memorial Day parade is, uh, on the Sunday before Memorial Day at two o'clock, look forward to seeing everyone.